All right, I am calling this meeting to order at 7:27 PM on October 8th, 2024. There are three of the five planning commissioners.
We may say.
Jill Burkett.
And Erica Verne. So. Do I have any additions, deletions on the agenda items?
I don't see any.
Nope.
I make a motion to approve.
I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Right. Approved minutes for April 2024, they did not get included in your packet. So, may I have a motion to table?
Oh my god.
I'll make a motion to table.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, zoning administrators report, we currently, I have, the zoning office has issued 28 permits to date for the year. Which is just about average, so we're doing fine. During the summer, the DRV met several different times. And permits, I'm sure, we're all aware, one permit was issued for Tamara and the market. Then in August, they met and a permit was approved for Mr. Charles Smith to open up a restaurant where Tamara's restaurant used to be, next to the post office, 137 North Main Street. And the other applicant was Mr. and Mrs. Wicker on Hartsborough Road for a short-term rental on their property, which was also approved. They both have their permits and they are both in their 30-day appeal. So. Next is the town plan revision and discussion. Okay. As members of the planning committee, commission, the town plan needs to be ratified, or sorry, it needs to be updated. And the current town plan was approved on June 4th, 2018. And of course, it is going to be up for renewal, it is up for renewal by 2026. So, even though I know that's about a year and a half away, looking at the timeline and the process, I believe we need to start looking at it and start revising it as possible. For the board's information, there are no municipal grants that we can apply for, as we did before, to have a planner help us write it. It is.
That was nice.
It was nice. It's our responsibility to do it. The Rutland Regional Planning Commission does have a town planner who is keeping track of whose town plans need to be revised, and he is available for help if we have any questions. And as he is putting together a checklist of things that need to be incorporated into the town plan to keep it within statute, he is disseminating that information right now, it's not available. And he, the town of Wallingford is on his list as a town plan that needs to be renewed, but he's currently working with two or three other towns whose town plans expire in 2025. He, he's, he will look at ours, as he said, but he's not too, I won't say interested, but he doesn't have the time to work with us. And as he said, yours is due in 2026. So, we're getting a head start on it, as much as we can.
What's his name? Did I forget?
Logan Salwa. And one of the things, and this is really for the benefit of anybody, one of the things that Logan has sent was working with an existing town plan, review each chapter, write down your answers to these questions. Are the underlying assumptions still relevant? Is the information correct? Are there been any major accomplishments, new initiatives worth mentioning? Have any new barriers been encountered? Have any old barriers changed over time? What is the status of the plan's actions? Are goals and policies applicable? What's the next step to achieve your plan's goals? What's missing? What's important data? Data or, unfortunately, part of this was cut off. What should be included, that isn't. Okay. Now, looking over the Wallingford town plan, which is on the website, obviously, if you go to page four real fast, where it has the community profile, those numbers are wrong. I don't know if they need to be changed or not, but they are from 2018. Because according to the community profile, we've got 2,079 current residents, which averages out to 47.7 people per square mile. I don't know where they got that .7 person, but, you know, we go with it.
Division.
881 full-time residents and 141 vacationing seasonal and recreational residents. Those numbers obviously will have to be updated, and we can get those from the Rutland Planning Commission, as we need to. On page six, where it has outreach and participation, this is one of the things that we as a commission, do we want to have an outreach again? That, the money to do that, if you recall, came from the grant, because we have snacks and refreshments. The rental of the memorial building, the Rutland, sorry, the Rotary Memorial, Paul Payer's building, we could use. But the interesting thing is, if you, I've looked at this, and what new food businesses, well, we have a coffee shop bakery, and they're putting it together. And now, thanks to the market, we do have a sort of food co-op slash grocery. We don't have a brewery yet, but that might be coming, you never know.
Yeah.
So. We, when it comes to the food, we're fine. When it comes to the other types of businesses, hardware, laundry mat and storage facility, obviously, we don't. And the medical services in Wallingford, the only change is basically, as you know, Dr. Bosch's office has been changed. We don't have a pharmacy in here. Senior services, we don't have extra senior services, but I'm sure you're both aware of the program, Neighbor to Neighbor or Island Neighborhood, I think they changed the name. So, we've got that. We do have childcare. Parks and recreation, I think is doing really well. Tree replacement, there is, there was a looking at the trees, some of them, and at this particular point, I don't think it went through. Laboratory services are still there, so we're still holding our own, as far as I can see. But I don't know, and these are things to think about only. Do we want to do another survey? And collect it, see what's going on? Or do we just want to take this list and check off what we've already got and make a look at other things? Rhetorical questions are things to think about. Okay. What are the, and COVID didn't just mess up our timeline, it messed up everybody's timeline, as you all know. Because we had, in the economic development action items, a lot of these things, we were hoping we could get done in 2019 and 2020. Obviously, some of it didn't, it didn't work. So, one of the things I think we'll have to do is take a look at all of the action items. Do we want to keep them? Do we want to get rid of them? Do we want to change them? And, and, you know, things like that. So. That is really the main reason why I thought we could discuss today. Now, I also included in the meeting packet links to the town plan for Hubbardton and another one to Fairhaven, because both of those town plans have been approved within the past month. And there is, I do know, and Logan is on top of letting all the towns know, there is certain language and certain sections that have to be in the town plan in order for approval. So, what those are, I don't know exactly, but.
Hopefully, he'll tell us. Hopefully, we'll find out.
Yeah, we will. But quite frankly, if you compare what we've already got in our town plan to even Hubbardton's just by the table contents, I think we're pretty, I don't think the changes are that drastic, except I believe in maybe transportation. There's more in energy, there's more of a section of transportation and energy in the fact of how are we going to, how are we going to achieve our energy goals that the state has put forth? And of course, the other thing that got changed is the composting. I don't believe is in our town plan. Recycling, which is another thing that we can mention. So we've got a lot of things that we've done, it's just that we haven't put them down yet. So. What I would like to propose and for discussion is that, much like what the Rutland Regional Planning Commission is doing, is each one of us take, I mean, we don't have a lot of chapters in here that are, you know, they're not, the sections really are not arduous, is that maybe we take a look at things that each one of us is interested in, or we decide, okay, I'll take this section, you take that section, and so on and so forth. And we go through it, and maybe compare it to, say, Hubbardton and Fairhaven, and see what they've got in there, what we're missing. Until Logan can give us a checklist of things that we absolutely 100% have to have, let's make our own.
Okay. Do we know when we're going to get that? Does that be?
Oh, sometime between now and six months from now. He's working on it.
Okay.
He's working on it.
Now, is that deadline, 2026, that's like January 1st, or is that like April 15th?
It would be January 3rd, 2026.
Okay.
Because this expires.
Okay.
Now, one of the main reasons, again, for our information, one of the main reasons why we have to have a town plan, and it has to be adopted before June 4th, or June 3rd, 2020, whatever, is that our historic village designation, one of the requirements for that is, do you have a town plan?
Right.
So, if we don't have a town plan, it gets a little difficult to do a historic village designation, as far as I know. That is also coming up, I believe. We don't have anything to do with that, but that was, I know, approved after this was approved the same year. So I'm just going on that information. And if that is the case, then we have to. My understanding is, and I could be wrong, but my understanding is, even, normally speaking, even if we don't get it approved by the time that this expires, this keeps going until we do get it approved. But I don't know about historic designation, if it impacts. So, my feeling is, let's just work on it and see if we can get it done. The other thing is, because we do have Australian ballot approval, we don't have until June of 2026, we have until March of 2026 to get it onto the town ballot. But in order to get it on the town ballot, as the commission is very aware, having just gone through this with the regs, we have to hold public hearings, we have to send it to the select board, they have to hold the public hearings, and then it has to go on the ballot. So we really have maybe a year to get it all done.
That's a lot of work to do in a year. Well, and hopefully, we have no hiccups.
I agree. Truthfully speaking, taking a look at what, well, Elise did, Alessia.
Elise?
Elise, I think it was Elise. Elise, yeah. What she did, I, as you would say in the building trade, the current town plan's got good bones.
Yeah.
It's just maybe changing some of the wordage, and maybe adding what the state requires. Taking a look at the year-round events, I mean, on page nine, I know, it doesn't matter, it doesn't mention anything about Wallingford Day in July, but that is really fast becoming a really nice thing. It doesn't mention anything in October about Halloween night, which is also becoming a pretty interesting thing.
Oh, yes.
So. You know, maybe, maybe even the community events, we can update, that's not, that's not a problem. And everything. So, that's where we are on this.
Like, I'm looking through Fairhaven's quickly, and they've got some really great standouts, you know, so I think that's, it's going to be interesting, and we'll just use ours as a springboard.
That's.
But I do think it's important that we somehow form a survey, because people in the community want to have a say, and if we don't, we're going to hear that.
Okay. Well, if we do a survey, that was put together by Elise, but I would ask to see if they still have a copy of it, a soft copy of it?
Yeah.
If they do, fine. If not, then maybe we can create some questions and send it out. That survey was done on paper, if I recall correctly.
Right, and then maybe like around town meet, we can really just bring it to this, yeah, talk about it.
Can, can you just tab those, that as a file on the, on the town's website, and then, like, on Front Porch Floor, and remind people that there is this thing that they should?
Yeah, send it in by whatever date.
Because mailing things can get expensive.
Yeah. Well, but often, the town hall, like, on the box, maybe, or?
Well, I mean, email it to.
Oh, right.
Well, and the other thing is, what is it, Survey Monkey?
Oh, right.
You can ask up to 10 questions for free.
Okay.
So, that might be something to look into, too. And that way, you can go on online, and your answers are automatically sent over. And then have, I mean, we can run off, maybe 100 copies or something, put them in the library for people that,
Right.
you know, don't want to do it. But on Front Porch Floor, put the link.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I think we could even tax them up at the post office, because it's town business.
Yep.
And, but I think it's key to have a suggestion box, people could, you know.
Right. Well, we can put a suggestion box here in town.
Well, on the survey, like, just have a point.
Okay. So, I'll ask, I'll ask Logan if he has a copy of our old survey, or if he has a survey, maybe there is a survey out that we can, you know, modify if we have to. Do we, since this is still the planning stages, obviously, do we want to have a outreach evening, like we did before?
I'm not an outreach evening person.
Yeah.
Think about that. I think because we, it's still kind of fresh from before. We did it, we started implementing, COVID happened, and now we're back, we've come like full circle.
I agree.
I think if we can just kind of pick up where we left off, it's still
Okay.
fresh.
All right.
But maybe we, you know, it's a big undertaking to have that huge, you know, gathering and.
Yeah, I know. Or the other thing is, when, we can ask, we put on the agenda a town meeting?
Yes.
And hand out surveys at the town meeting?
It's good idea, too.
Also, like, even just going to select board, having a night, you know, or this is what we're, we're doing, so people want to come and ask questions or whatnot. I just think it's important to publicize it.
Okay? Right. I know the Rutland Regional Planning Commission is redoing their, their plan. And one of the things that they did was they had outreach with, I think, not all the towns, but I know we have, we had two here. Rutland had one, Killer Town had one, I think, I don't remember how many there were. But it was, the one that we had here was on a Saturday morning from 10 to 12. And they had, it was, it was very professional, but again, they have a little bit more money to play with than we do.
Right.
Which, and one of the things that they, they did was, they also notified everybody, including, in fact, it was on Front Porch Floor, too, and they're doing it again, that there is an online survey to take it. And I think it was Survey Monkey, is actually, and then we're asking all Rutland residents to participate, just go online, answer the questions. Wallingford, out of all the 27 towns in the Rutland County, had the most responses. So. And the only reason why I'm bringing this up is because they are now in round two. The first drafts are finished, the second drafts are coming up. And they're asking to do it again. So. I was asked to, please ask the commissioners to do that. So I have now asked the commissioners to do that. Answer the questions.
I did it last time, I'll do it, I started, I was like, okay, now I want to take my time on this, so.
Yeah, yeah. I think it really only takes about 10 months.
Yeah.
At that, so, okay. So what else? Do we?
I think we really need to, for the survey, let's, if we can find the first round questions, and then next meeting, we'll talk about it. Let's see, maybe by December.
Okay.
We can formulate a survey, so I'd like to see that out there for like three months, so there's, people can't say, oh, I didn't know anything about it. We just, you know.
Okay. So, we want to discuss it in November, and finalize it in December. And disseminate it from December on. To town meeting?
Yes.
Up to and including town meeting? Okay. Yeah. That way, it wouldn't impact changing any of the language or anything else in here.
Right.
Which is a good thing, because we can start working on that. Okay. I think we can do that. So. All right. So, do we want to divvy up everything, or do we want to take a look? Where would you like to proceed? How would you like to proceed?
I, I think it'd be good if we all just, if we said, okay, for the next meeting, let's read the first, I don't know, 10, five pages or something, and then compare it to the other town plans, because I'm already like, really liking Fairhaven's stamping.
Yeah, they did a good job.
And it looks like, under purpose, they have 15 bullet points, and it looks like they are conforming to what state languages do, so that's,
Yeah.
it's really great.
Tony, what are you thinking?
That's fine with me, I think we can do more, probably do more than five pages, but.
Okay. How many pages? Oh, we've only got.
We have 32 or four.
We don't have.
35, I think. 30s, mid, mid 30s. 33.
No, 30s. 33, should, should we do 10 pages or 15?
Sure. Why don't we do 10?
Okay.
That's easy enough to do. And the nice thing is, as the kids would say, there's my pictures. Okay. All right, so we'll take that. Up to the Walling, Wallingford Village Historic District, finish that on the page 11. And or we could actually, if, if you agree, we could actually go down to page 11, because that finishes up the section, historical action item.
Okay.
That's the end of that, that, excuse me, that's the end of that section.
Okay.
And the community, so. I think what she's, well, I don't think I know, what she's done is she's divided it between the community, the land, and the facilities, infrastructure, so.
Okay.
Why don't we do it that way? We'll just take the community next time. And the next section then would be the land, which I think we probably really do need to take a look at a little bit more, especially with flood resilience and the flood plan and that type of thing. And then the last one we can take a look at is facilities and infrastructure. And by that time, hopefully, we'll have some idea of what language needs to be put into any and all of them. How's that?
Sounds good.
Sounds good to me.
So we're going to read the community first. And then we'll read the land. And then the last is the facilities. And I don't know if we're going to be able to do the exact same thing with each of the others, but I think we, they're not divided up the same way, is what I'm saying. But I think we can pretty well pick and choose through it. Hubbardton, for example, has cultural resources and historic resources. The Hubbardton Battlefield comes to mind, so see how that matches up pages.
Right.
Okay. All right. And I know Fairhaven does the same.
Yeah. History first.
Okay. Okay?
Great.
All right. So. Do we want to discuss a timeline now? I think we've sort of discussed it already, but we don't need to formalize it, but basically, do we want a drop dead date?
We.
Here, when we want to fish?
Yeah, we, I think it's a good goal to reach towards, you know.
Okay.
Well, it usually gets pretty slow by the summer.
Yeah. We might not get a month off next summer.
We might, because again, this has got a lot in it. It's, it might just be a matter of rearrangement.
Yeah, exactly.
And I do have a soft copy for it. We can reuse the same pictures, or we can get new if we wish. The maps haven't changed. And the maps are already in here, and even if they have changed, we can get new maps from the RPC to flop in there. So I think, I think it's doable, it's just, we're going to have to make sure. Okay.
I think it's a really good document, so we're just, you know, adding.
Yep.
Well, we're finally up there.
We've put a lot of work into it. Okay. So, timeline is meeting, town meeting, well, to get it on the ballot in 2026?
Right. Town meeting. We have a goal to have it wrapped up by October.
Next year?
Yes.
Sounds good to me.
That gives us a little elbow room.
October 2025.
In case the invisibles show up.
Well. Okay. And of course, you know, we can send, we can send drafts to the select board at any particular time, so that's good.
Okay.
Sounds good. All right. Anything, any more discussion on this? Okay.
Should we plan on sending a draft? Like in August, by August?
I'd back it up to July myself, because don't forget, the select board only meets once a month.
Okay.
Okay, timeline to the select.
They only meet once a month, is that in the summer?
Yeah.
Oh, that's right, yeah, okay, so July.
Record. We might want to back it up to June, then.
Let's shoot for June, and that. Let's shoot for June, and that, once again, gives us a little elbow room if some, if there's a hiccup of some sort.
Right. And that's the draft you're talking about?
Mm-hmm.
Because I was going to say, I don't think we're going to be finalized by then. I mean, we're, we're a great commission, but we all have other lives. Okay. Right. Okay. Do we want to look at others, other town plans, or do we just want to use these two? Because all of the town plans for Rutland are on the Rutland Regional Planning Commission webpage.
Okay.
So, but as I said, I'm not necessarily pushing these two, per se, but I am pushing these two in the fact that they were just approved.
Yeah, that's what I like about it. I think it's...
I don't think we need any more hard copies.
No.
Okay, good. Why? You don't want to cut down any more trees?
No, pardon. Well, I cut down trees, but, you know, I try.
Yeah, but for a different reason. Okay. All right. Well, I think we know pretty much where we're, how we're heading. It's just a matter of doing it and maybe refining the timeline as we go along. So are there any, is there any other discussion on anything?
So the, the plan for us is that we're going to do, compare our 11 pages to the parts in these other two, see if there's something that we think we should add or possibly subtract based on things that have happened in the intervening years, and then come back in a month with bright shining faces and get to work. Sounds good.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sounds good to me, too.
Great.
Good. Boy, homework. Remember those days? Okay. So the next meeting of the planning commission is the 12th of November. And unless there's anything else, I'll entertain a motion, or I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and we are adjourned at 8 o'clock?